Good evening, welcome to the September 10th meeting of the Daniel Boone Area School District. If you could all please rise and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright folks, good evening. We're gonna tackle our special voting meeting agenda first. Mr. Wolf, roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Radka.
Ms. Albright? Mr. Miller? Mr. Dershowitz?
Present.
Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. Biscott?
Here.
Mr. Wolf here.
Mr. Jaiska?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Radka?
Here.
Alrighty, procedures for public participation are located on the inside cover of your agendas. Are there any agenda edits for our special voting meeting? Hearing none. Are there any presentations by public on agenda items? Seeing none, we have items 7A through D. Happy to entertain a motion for all those, or individually?
Seven.
And motion is for 7A through D, Mr. Dershowitz?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Strobel. Discussion? So everybody's clear. Item B, as in Baker, is gonna be Wendy Sweet will be standing in for the rescinding the appointment for Jennifer Darrell. So Ms. Darrell actually never even took the spot, right, Mr. Hurley?
That's a personnel related issue, so we'd have to go into executive session to discuss that.
And then item C, presentation of our access coordinator. And item D, pretty much spells it out there. Any questions on any items? All good? Roll call, sir. Roll call? Yes, please. Mr. Dershowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. Biscott?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, yes. Mr. Jaiska?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Any presentations by public on issues? Okay, we'll adjourn and go over it to the committee hall. So adjourn that, committee hall. We've already done roll call, actually, I'm sorry, we haven't done pledge. We'll do roll call again, please, Mr. Wolf.
Yes, Mr. Radka. Mr. Dershowitz?
Here.
Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. Biscott?
Here.
Mr. Wolf, here. Mr. Jaiska?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Radka?
Here.
Seven members in the floor. Procedures for public participation have not changed in the past three minutes, they're still the same. Are there any agenda edits by board members? Seeing none. There will be an executive session following this to discuss personnel and negotiation items. Mr. Hurley, taking away with superintendent's report.
Yes, I'd like to personally and publicly thank Books-A-Million, which is a bookstore, for their donation of over $1,200 of books to the Daniel Boone Area School District. Trying to give you an idea of how this kinda played out, basically, they came to us. They asked us for a list of books that we would be interested in. Our reading teachers provided us with a list of books. And people who went into the store had the opportunity to purchase a, whatever else they're purchasing, purchase a book for the Daniel Boone Area School District. So Books-A-Million kinda sponsored the whole thing and solicited the donations. Obviously, many of our community members and probably people outside of the community bought a significant number of books. And as soon as you guys accept that, I'll be happy to pass them out to our reading teachers, so we'll put them to good use. The second thing I'd like to talk about is, and I'd like some input from the board on, the educational foundation would like to have something they're calling a First Friday. And what they'd like to do before school starts, they would like to bring food trucks up to the high school in the parking lot, for donation, of course. And so before school starts, where the kids can buy sandwiches, they can buy coffee, things of that nature. This has the support of the administration, it also has the support of our food service company. And it also has the support of the two kids I polled informally thought it'd be really cool to do every Friday. Will them, and they can get coffee and things like that.
What's the statistical variance on the two kids?
So anyway, I'd like to get some board input on that. I think it would be something neat we could do for the kids, certainly would be something from a morale standpoint for the kids, I think would be cool. Basically, my understanding, talking to our food service, the impact of them will be negligible. I mean, actually may help them because they can set up their own truck out there. And they're getting about 20 breakfasts a day at the high school, so they're not getting that many students anyway, so this may actually help their numbers, not harm their numbers.
Well, it's not a very good food truck, so I think it's a good idea.
The record will show that Mr. Miller joined at 7:36. But just, where did he end up?
We're not that far into it yet, in terms of that, but obviously, while the area cordoned off.
Yeah, I also assume there'll be staff present.
Yeah, we'll put some people out there, it won't be a problem.
I mean, my only concern was to make sure that our partners in food service were okay with it, and it sounds like we're good there, so. Any other board concerns, questions? I think we're safe to move forward here, so. Excellent, thank you. That's all, everybody. Any public comment? That'll move to our finance items. You have tax exemptions, and some items of River Rock, as well as a, we've already had the discussion, we're informed about the book donation, and then the PTC donation. So I had, on item C, then, my assumption with the nine reservations, and I don't think we have an issue with being with nine, unfortunately. But I assume if we're less than nine, we still pay for nine.
Yes, that would be correct, and we did research, the kids are there right now currently, as well as also the historical data on that. And we're not going below nine on any days, I'm very confident of that based on our historical data. So basically, we'd be saving $30 a day per student, and you can do the quick math, and it's like $40-some thousand dollars over their standard rate, that's just quick math.
Any other board questions on any of the items under finance? Hearing none. Public comment on our finance items? Alright, we'll move to programs. Numerous field trips or overnights, and, which is actually my question. So, for a few of these, like, Boyer Town, we still do an overnight trip for that? That would seem to be a trip where we'd be a day trip, I mean, pack a four? I mean, by the time you find a hotel in Boyer Town, it might be even closer than you. There was Boyer Town, I think, I think Connor Weiser was another one I would, yeah, that's obviously farther. So I guess my question is, can we just go through these and make sure they're truly overnight trips? I mean, unless there is, I mean, there may be a valid reason why it is, I don't know, but I just thought I'd ask.
We'll get back to you in a minute.
Any other board comments on our items under programs? Any public comment? Alright, moving right along.
The record will show.
The record will show that Ms. Albright joined at 7:39. Any secretary's correspondence, Mr. Wolf?
Nothing, Mr. Radka.
Item B, with the intermediate unit. Obviously, the big thing, which we've already heard a little bit about, is the new Crisis Go app that is being tested and finalized. Just so everybody's aware, the IU did spearhead that with a grant from Senator Schwenk. And, you know, collaboratively with law enforcement, as well as all the districts. It sounds like a really great program to provide parents with updates, staff. You know, my question was always, if there is an emergency, how do parents get good information? You know, I believe it also provides maps to the police and whatnot for the need to respond to the new school. So, the grant funding should cover, I believe, two years of the cost. And then the IU is, I think, optimistic that there might be some more money to secure out there, but irregardless, if that money was not found, so obviously, there is a cost to the program, which my assumption would be, we then pass it to the districts. But I would think, I mean, just as a heads up, that this app might at some point cost different money. But I mean, I think it's money well spent. So, and, you know, we're, I mean, Birch County is pretty much a spearhead in this thing, and we're on the ground here, so. Really, I think outstanding stuff coming from the IU in that regards. So that was really the big, one of I think the big takeaways from our last meeting, with regards to the IU. Any questions about that? Anything from the BCTC, Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mr. Radka, just two things. The JOC entered agreement with the Education Association on a new contract that was approved by the JOC. The other item of interest was, the JOC recommended that they move forward with the design phase of the engineering of having a new building specifically dedicated to welding. That would be constructed on the west campus. So the $60,000 that they authorized for the engineering site preparation, all that, to commence. We were looking at, initially, they were looking at all the funding, and several of us had a question that there was no project manager, or, I should say contractor or risk. So, you're basically have a deadline to have this done by the, at the beginning of August, and then the school would be basically having no less than eight trades that would be on site, but no one would be doing any kind of project schedules or timelines. You know, making sure everybody's getting in when they're supposed to, and the project's actually gonna be completed on time, because part of the justification for the project was the revenue for the students that are, adult students that are coming in for education. Plus, you're already committing to the high school sophomores that are gonna be enrolled in that next class. And right now, they're, they would be accepting enrollment to a welding class, anticipating that the building would be open and ready when they start at the end of August, so. I was among those that objected to moving forward without having a construction manager. So, now they're going back to look at the engineering, engineering company who's doing it, they offer that service. They were offering on a limited basis, but we wanted to understand and define what limited meant, because ultimately, someone has to be responsible for making sure the project's done on schedule and on budget. And administrators are not in a position to, you know, run as a construction manager in our group. So, those are the only two things, but we didn't wanna hold up the project, so we approved the engineering and site preparation paperwork, so it's moving forward.
Well, of course, we need some lack of moisture to get the site prepped, pardon me.
Well, it's the, all the engineering design, that's permitting, all that's gotta be built first before you can start putting shovel around.
Any questions for Mr. Wolf? I don't see any student board representatives today. Mr. Dershowitz, anything from our legislative flukes?
Yeah, got something that House Bill 2329 is legislation to propose to set up 100% residential properties and warrants for taxation for schools to exclude, I think it's the same thing they try a lot, so we'll see where they go on that. Another thing being talked about, just came up with the heat wave that we had, the first week of school. Pennsylvania and their education advocates are calling for more state funding for school infrastructure upgrades. That'd be nice, some of the projects we need to have at some point, I'd call into that. That's about it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dershowitz? Alright, any other reports I missed? Any public comments? We want the personnel. We have an extra CRICA resignation, obviously, we've already dealt with B1A. And the reason I had that moved from the Cal, obviously, was the, we would meet before the September 21st deadline, so we're gonna get that taken care of. And then we have some other appointments, volunteers. Still working on our administrative comp plan. I heard a sigh from, I think, Mr. Scott next to me. Any board questions on those items? Any public comment? Alright, under item 11, we have our student headcounts. And, I'll, I'll tell Mr. Hurley I'll stir the pot a little bit. Just, you know, to avoid any grunts, if you look at your student enrollment, you'll see that first grade is not where we wanted it to be. In theory, we could move a teacher out of kindergarten and still be well within our numbers. Just putting it out there, and we do have a, we did have a third grade teacher resignation, which we have not filled. We do need to hire for that spot. If we didn't hire, we could move a teacher around and still have enough teachers in our elementary to cover all our needs. And if you're gonna, I know we need, it would disrupt some students in kindergarten, but we're gonna be disrupting 20-some-odd kids anyway in third grade with a new teacher. So either way you look at it, kids will be getting a new teacher at some point, so. Just putting it out there for food for thought. Any board comments on the moment? Public comment? A curriculum instruction meeting happened earlier today at a very speedy pace. Mrs. Olson, anything to share with the board?
Yes, Mr. Radka, we talked about the school court card that we're gonna be getting from Department of that in state. It should be out sometime in October. We were preparing to have a presentation at the, at the CNI committee meeting in November, because we probably won't have it by the time we have our meeting in October.
Is that, is that a meeting, if I can see, is a good number the board at?
Is that a? We'll, once we see what our court card looks like, we can decide if we wanna have a large, a large presentation at CNI and a smaller one at the C, at the Cal right afterwards, or if you wanna just have a remote. So we can decide once we know how much detail we need to drill down to, I guess. We, we had a very high level discussion about the possibility of maybe putting together some sort of resources for them, even for parents, to help them, especially at the elementary level, to understand some of the common core requirements. We haven't done that in a while, it's been probably eight years or so since we've done that, so we were talking about maybe doing that again. Very, in very broad strokes. Curriculum cycle, the curriculums, we like to look at the curriculum every six years on a worldwide basis. And we, that's kinda fallen away last several years, and so Dr. Sinserpino is gonna start working on what that cycle's gonna look like, you know, developing each discipline from K through 12 on staggered, to get it all, to get everything, to get everything looked at all the way from kindergarten to 12th grade, at least once every six years. Induction for new teachers is required, we've already approved their mentors. Their, we talked about some of the requirements that are part by the state versus some of the additional things that we do only on the school and building level, and what that program looks like. Dr. Sinserpino would like to have that be a little bit more structured from year to year. And that is also in the process. Talk about the opening in service programs we had, and how we had Tom Warner here talking about how talking to teachers about, you know, the boy's pitfalls regarding special education resignation, things like that. And working with the high school teachers, specifically about the iPads, maybe separating teachers into groups of folks that were felt like newbies, and people that felt like they were a little bit more experienced. So you had, instead of teaching, talking to everybody at one level, they were able to get a little further by separating people by where they felt their comfort level was. And then teachers did breakouts with their grade levels, board partner chairs, worked on lesson planning. Sounded like in services went well. We did, we didn't talk much about the iPads, because I didn't hear about that from Mr. Miller and from the technology committee. We talked about that in the deck, in that meeting. And our next meeting is sometime in October, it is October 8th, 6 o'clock.
Sounds like you jammed your line to a short one.
Yes.
So, between Mr. Miller and CNI, I mean, is there a, kinda like a planned update at some point as to what curriculum has made its way over to the iPads, or what, you know?
That was more a discussion we had, the very beginnings of that conversation, I think that Mr. Miller can speak a little bit more to that. We did discuss that in technology. Very fair, very fair.
Hearing briefly, it's just beginning, and I think there's something that we have to. Yeah, I thought maybe at a, some point, maybe, I don't know, a couple points down the road, we can get a little update, so that we know how it's progressing, yeah. We definitely will, and I think it's mixed at this point, I was just about to open the house, and it's great, by the way. A lot of old apartment, man. But then, there's, what I saw from just from the UCI, I saw, I thought they were working into the work rate, I thought they were working on it. I've heard some mixed stories, but what I've seen, it looked like. Any other questions for Mrs. Olson?
Yeah, so in that same vein, aside from just the iPad curriculum, are we gonna see, or have you seen a more broader plan for curriculum across elementary, middle school, and high school?
That was the discussion that Dr. Sinserpino said, that, you know, that it needs to happen. It's not gonna happen for all grades all at once, but we need, she's identified that as a priority for her to get more, more time and resources into, into, unless, are you talking specifically about stuff electronically on the iPad? Or you're talking K through 12?
No, I just meant like.
We're meshing our K through 12, is that what you're?
No, I mean, I guess, there was an entire year, last year, that I thought we were developing a new curriculum or already changed the curriculum for the elementary schools. There was some, what I understood before was that there was some, at least some testing around data for the fifth grade that was in Birchboro last year, and we were gonna see some type of.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna put words into Dr. C's mouth, but I mean, she, she did a little, her little trial experiment over there, I'll say, Dr. C?
Yeah.
Which she was hoping to kinda bring to the other K through five experience. I think probably Dr. C would need, if you look at that specific question, I think, you know, she'd probably just need to have a little presentation with it. Unless you wanted to stand up and go right now.
Alright, we're gonna move on. Yeah, we did some clear mention work with, with Birchboro last year, based on our primary success results, it looks like it was beneficial to kids. I know that we started the year with 15 of those kids, and we ended the year with 15 of them, and we think one of those 15 was a student who just had a whole year in truancy program, so, that'll be a good school to learn. So I think we were very successful, and we make good, I'm looking forward to work with data, we don't have that data yet, but we know that Megan and Malia both built solid intervention blocks into both their interest in halftime. And the future government will be, so, you know, on the surface level, it's, it was very successful. We have kids that will be getting, getting some time on their instructional level with the teacher. Further, we're trying to do 60 minutes of halftime, so.
And then, I guess, is there, is there a, is there a long-term plan for curriculum in the elementary books?
Oh, that was, we were talking about saying, what we don't have right now is a functioning curriculum cycle, and that's a K to 12 piece. It's not just a K to five piece, or a K to eight piece, or, it's a K to 12 piece. We know that social studies was the last thing that was partly done, but it's not finished, and so we know that that has to be finished. But in a curriculum cycle, what you do is, every six years, you get your hands on a whole curriculum, K to 12. You don't kinda wanna pick curriculum in a single fashion, you need it to make sense longitudinally, K to 12. So, that needs to be done, and we know that that needs to be done, so that's something that we're gonna start, making sure we have.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking, I know since I've been on the board, focus has been on the curriculum at the high school. And I know if there's a requirement that says we have to come up with it every six years, we have to look at our K to 12 plan. I think that's great, but what are we doing about our K to five plan and our six to eight plan in between those six-year requirement, acquired studies?
You would do any curriculum as a K to 12, you wouldn't do it just in the PC now. So if we looked at social studies, we would look at it as a K to 12 picture, so that kids have an experience in social studies from kindergarten to 12th grade that makes sense, that doesn't necessarily repeat itself at standard phases.
No, I think that makes absolute sense, but like I said, my own observation has been, I don't know if anyone feels differently, but most of the conversations I've heard about curriculum have been at the high school, and not at the K to 12. So I'm just trying to understand.
Is there, in keeping with wanting to look at it holistically, I don't know if holistically, but from, from K to 12 in each discipline, is there a specific discipline that you're asking that maybe we could attack first beyond community studies? And I guess, in keeping with what Dr. C is saying, his best practices, if there is a specific. if there is a specific thing like math or reading that you're looking at and thinking, maybe we should attack that sooner rather than later? That could be, that could be, that could be a way, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I do. Obviously, I'm not an educator, but I would think that given what I had an understanding that social studies would be the last on the list of things and...
It just so happens that that's the word that was started.
Reading and math and science might be a little higher on the list.
I understand what you're saying is just that because of the fact that that one was already started but completed, it does make sense to address that issue.
I know last year, we had conversations around the schools doing their various testings differently. And there was an issue there. Has that been rectified? I know that we had, you know, vast differences in our scores from last year. What are we doing about that? Now that they're all in one school, we were led to believe that that was going to make things easier and improve things. So is that, what are we, they're not just going to improve because we put them all in one building. They're going to improve because we put them all in one building and we've taken advantage of the fact they're all in one building and we're doing something about it.
And curriculum, someone over there, I think if I'm wrong, I mean, standardized testing and curriculum, you know, are two different things that we need to attack. They're not really the same?
No, I agree.
If that's wrong, correct me.
I could ask a little bit of information for you. The reason, one of the reasons why she was talking about social studies is because during the last five years, there's been work on the math curriculum, the ELA curriculum, then the science curriculum. In fact, you guys bought a significant amount of the FOS kits about a year ago. You guys spent about $100,000 on that, I believe. So that's one of the reasons why she was talking about social studies because it barely got started, that particular piece of that. There's, by the way, there's still some work because we're now about three to four years away from the math. One of the things you want to do is you want to look at your assessment results. And then you want to take a look back at the curriculum and say, hey, how do we get it lined up and where are our gaps are? So you need to touch back at the curriculums once you get out of a year or two years. Now you have assessment data, so there might be gaps here. Aren't they teaching? Maybe we need to spend more time on these things. And that's how we kind of go through our curriculum cycle. What we, I think Dr. C's talking about is we want to continue this process. And we want to get to social studies, which really hasn't been touched at all.
I guess, you know, I want to leave you the point. I guess what I'm saying is that our first priority is to educate the kids. And all we talk about is budget, which is really important. But when we have, we should at some point see a plan, like what's the plan? We're doing a budget. It's a plan. All we talk about is planning the budget, planning, what are we doing to plan around the curriculum? What are we doing to plan?
I think that you're talking about the same thing. I think the budget over the past several years kind of dictated that we kind of put a hold on all our planning when it came to curriculum. And we've been trying to catch up. We've been, you know, putting on fires instead of having a comprehensive plan like we should have had years ago. But stuff was put on hold.
Well, is that why we didn't be...
Are you director of curriculum?
Well, that's what we're doing now.
And that's why I'm asking, when are we going to see a plan? If it's not happening here, I'm assuming it's happening in your committee, and that's why I'm asking.
You had mentioned about some methodology they changed for the scores that made the scores different. What I understood is, and then Dr. C...
Just explain that to us.
Yeah, that basically we spent a lot of time teaching to what the test was going to require them to know instead of teaching them, you know, the normal curriculum and not spending so much time preparing for the test, which, all right, maybe they learned more about the things they should learn, but they kind of, their test scores suffered from standardized testing. Is that, is that correct?
I think, I think we're all kind of talking about the same thing.
Okay.
So we have talked a lot about adding courses at high school, which is adding a course. It's not necessarily changing the curriculum. We've talked a lot about iPads and how they support instruction at high school. That's not really a curriculum. It's a tool to deliver content. So it's different. The broader concept of what are we teaching, when are we teaching, and how's it related to the standards? And that's developing curriculum. So the difference in what we did last year at Berthborough was not a change in curriculum. It just was a change in are we giving kids what they need instructionally in that moment every day? So it's just a different way of delivering instruction. And so, you know, we do have some walkthroughs in the end, both principal walkthroughs and assistant principal walkthroughs to kind of get to that instructional piece, which is one piece of what we do every day, teaching and learning. But you've got to have a roadmap. When your curriculum is your roadmap. And historically, my understanding is that the roadmap got put kind of on hold as a result of the budgeting pieces. So Mr. Raff, you're right. And so now it's just time to lay the road map. And you can't leave something sit for another six years that was partly done. You've got to finish that. And you do have to keep coming back. And we've had several conversations around math in particular. Do we need to come back to that? What's going on and why? Why does the data kind of look like nothing's going on in math and we know that it is? So those conversations have to be single called, but they have to kind of happen in a way that's not hit or miss or we'll miss on them.
And just before I forget, since we're early in the year, and if I'm incorrect on this, let me know. But I did, we put the Band-Aid on our Go Math program for another year. So I'm hoping we'll have a recommendation for next year. Is that what we're looking at here?
The Go Math, the license is for three years.
Is it three years?
It's in three years. If you remember, the discount that they gave us was substantial. It was almost, it ended up costing us like five thousand. If we got a one-year license, it's like $5,000.
I must have, Mr. Never, I thought it was only one year. Okay, so we're good with that for a couple of...
So the whole bummer, when will we see a plan? I mean, any estimate, ETA?
She's grading a curriculum. That's exactly what she's doing. She's creating a curriculum cycle for us to revisit the curriculum cycle. We've also got a data warehouse. That's just putting the tools and the people.
I just want to know, I could never, I couldn't begin to create such a plan, all right? However, I would like to see one. And I don't think, we're asking a lot to say, when could we expect to see one?
You're not. The conversation was very much a preliminary conversation. And so hopefully, we will have that answer for you.
I have a question. We had one in the past. I don't...
I've never seen that.
It looks like, so I don't know what it looked like if you gave it to me.
So I'd like to see one. I hope the rest of you feel the same way.
I don't know. She, is this in a plan format or I'm not sure what it looks like.
You're just, you're looking for a schedule by which we attack each discipline over a six-year span so that that is met? Or you're looking to see what the curriculum is?
High level, where are our gaps?
Okay.
Where do we need to focus and what are we doing about it? That's it. I mean, it's, you know, the details will come, but I mean, we, I'd like to just acknowledge that there's, we have a direction that we're following and keep going after it, not just like, I have to do this every six years.
I had a question. We kind of lost it over in enrollment. I thought we talked about it here. And maybe this isn't the place to talk about it. You can direct it. Be quiet. We'll talk about it another time. We talked about we needed to hire or potentially hire a third-grade teacher when the school year started. Where are we at in that process? Really good to have teachers in place before school year started.
We had, it was last second resignation. That person, we are allowed to hold people by law, by Pennsylvania law, for a significant number of days, which we're doing until we hire the right person. Hiring teachers is one of the most important, if not the most important thing that we do. So it's important that we properly vet the teachers through a rigorous process, which we're doing right now. We advertise for it. We take applications for it, and we're interviewing. And so when we get the right candidate that suits the needs of the building, we'll move forward with that. And we'll release the current teacher. And that's there right now. And then we'll bring the new person in.
I have two questions about that. Obviously, we're not going to just hold her as long as we're able to, just because we're not happy with her leaving.
Absolutely not.
We're going to put somebody in place. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying, we're not going to keep her to the length as long as we can because that's going to be super disruptive for those kids.
No, we're doing what's in the best interest of the kids. What we're doing is we're making sure we're hiring the right teacher. And then as we do with everyone, we try to do as fast as we can and make sure we get the right person in place. Then we release the teacher. This was sprung on us. Again, it was a last-second resignation. And so we, like all districts do, and people do it to us all the time also, we take their candidates. We've held that person in place for the interest of the kids because, you know, for obvious reasons.
And then will there be any transition days set forth? Or are the kids going to come in one day and it's just another teacher?
We'll transition that a day or two in there. We'll work that plan out with the building principal.
Any other questions for Mrs. Alton? That will move to facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Raff.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Any public comment? I glazed over that. Okay, now.
We did have a meeting August 27th. And Mr. Blankbiller gave us an update on some of the status of our buildings. Obviously, there are a lot of shortcomings with GCH progress over the summer. I don't want to labor that too much. Also, got an update on the high school entrance redo, reconfiguration, which was all but complete. I think they just had some ceiling tower, ladder, things to be finished while we had our meeting. So beyond that, there's some other projects that we started discussing preliminarily and some ongoing maintenance things, but nothing has really jumped out.
Any questions for Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, I saw Mr. Hurley's report again this week. We had items from issues at the high school. So are we doing anything to address back at performance?
Well, we can notify their management of their deficiencies. Mr. Blankbiller has, on repeated occasions, emailed a list of things that are deficient, as you see, for both, and the vice, the vice principal of the high school. Mr. Scores have very lengthy list of deficiencies, including the locker room that hadn't been cleaned out since the football game prior. So it's continuing on with the GCH's normal performance.
Basically, we're just going to have to approve, go out, propose new services. So we're going to have to have that conversation and we're going to have to make a motion and we're going to have to do that. Because they're not going to listen. They haven't listened. So it's time maybe we don't go active. So the board needs to have that in mind, that discussion and that vote coming sooner than later. That's what's going to happen with GCH. We're just going to have to get quotes.
Hey, Mike, have we talked to Brian about, you know, instead of these one-off scenarios, just start streamlining that process? Like, hey, look, you got 30 days to get this right, or we're going outside. You're going to pay for it.
Well, we always had that capability for non-performance. You know, Mr. Small, I'm sure can provide an update if they don't do their, what we've asked. We do have that right to hire another company and deduct that cost from their contract. But Mr. Small, if you can elaborate on that.
Mr. Silver will be speaking more in two weeks, but what do you think about that topic?
I mean, we did have a small discussion about, you know, what we would like is, for instance, one of the things I was not comfortable with initially with GCA is I wanted to retain the maintenance folks. Because we've never really had anyone at GCA supplied that really is qualified for the position they've held. And we had at least one instance where they charged the district for a maintenance person who was actually a clerical person. So, I mean, one of the things that I think we, you know, in my recommendation, and we're going to have continuing discussions on this, is that we would entertain having our own staff as district employees so we could actually get folks that are knowledgeable, have the right skills for the right job. And we're not treating, you know, we don't have carpenters trying to do electrical work. It's something we've experienced. So we'll have more discussions on that.
I believe Mr. Small was working on both the current contract enforcement as well as getting our bids ready for the next go-round.
Right. We'll be going out to advertising that. So again, a lot more to talk about that as we move forward.
Any public comment? Mr. Wolf staying with you, finance?
Yes, the finance committee met tonight. Ms. Haynes provided us an update for the Act One budget cycle. I asked her and she summarily sent it to everyone so you can see the timeline of the budget process. We have to make our decision on what we're going to do for Act One in the new year. So we'll be working on that. So take a minute and review that. She gave us an update on the P and T card procurement. That we use our credit cards to purchase a lot of materials. I know, I think it was $15,000 last, two years ago, $11,000 last year for money we got back for like the roof project for the high school. I know they charged that to the credit card. So, I mean, that's just money that goes right back into the general fund. So earn cash back. She had made some changes to that to try and maximize our return. And she's flipping further at that.
Maybe we could use some of the hotel points for the overnights.
Thank you for that question. I'm not sure how to answer that. Of course, we got the update on Skyward. This is Haynes' favorite project that we've all come to know and love almost as much as she does. She's very excited about that. Did you say it's going to be in the beginning of the year or be...
January 1st. We go live January 1st.
Okay, so January 1st is implemented.
That's when the Terminator comes down and takes over.
Absolutely. When you start thinking and get this part tied away.
As we move forward, not with this budget cycle, but the next budget cycle, Ms. Haynes did say that the administrators are going to be entering their information into this program documenting, for instance, if you're going to just break out, I use sports as an example. If you're for volleyball, you know, here's the coaches, assistant coaches, you know, whatever the officials are, transportation, all that would be itemized. So we wouldn't be, you know, as far as all the other administrators, the abilities are, we'd be the same thing for supplies and so forth. So we won't be sitting here in April and May, you know, asking for the backup on what these idle items actually entail. So we already have that information.
We shall see. We shall see.
So it won't be this budget?
No, it won't be.
It won't. Since the program is starting in January, this one, this would start with 2021.
I mean, I thought we're going to be getting ready ahead of it. Scott gave a simple tent go-up. He was just going to get ready for January 1st. But I thought we're going to start using the budgeting for events.
Ms. Haynes, is it possible for that, for Skyward to be used in this budget cycle? That was Mr. Miller's question.
Yes, I'm going to actually be loading the information in myself in the Skyward because it has to be there. Because as we go live January 1st, it's going to have to have a budget in there. So I will be looking at all the budgets coming through. Now that we've got the accounting straight, I feel very confident that you'll come with information even this year. You'll definitely know what's in this one.
So what you're going to be doing is the entry instead of the other ministers?
I have to.
You're going to use the software?
Yeah, I have to. I have to enter it this time because there's no, they're going to have that kind of time to be trained and then upload it in. So I'm going to put it in this year because it's not going to start until January 1st.
Well, it has to be January 1st for the taxes and anything like that.
Yeah, for the payroll. Correct.
So we'll be able to get actuals that we can compare to the plan?
Yep.
Well, it's going to be what they submitted, the detail that they submit, and Ms. Haynes putting it in there. So that naturally will be, I would think, generating a lot of questions and dialogue between the administrators and Ms. Haynes and her folks. Lastly, Ms. Haynes provided us an update, the update is, I mean, the audit, excuse me, has begun, so we'll have a little on that. Anything you want to say real briefly about that thing? It just started.
No, it just, it actually just started, but it's a lot smoother than it was last year. They walked in, they got the financials right when they walked in the door, which is a lot better than last year.
Mike, I do a question, or a question. Last year, when we were discussing a lot of budget information, we were told that the administrators weren't adept at that particular area, creating that budget, and so having the information for us is good, but is there any plan somewhere, or I would ask that question of, to help coach the administrators as they present, provide these budgets, so that we can get something early that's not so fluffed up like we had dealt with last year? And then our task wasn't trying to find where that pepper was, pull it out, and so is there any plan around that? Anybody, anywhere to try and sit down as they create these budgets against coaching? Because that was, that was the crux last year, where they don't, they're not adept in that area. That's what I heard.
Well, from the training side of using Skyward, they will, Ms. Haynes said there will be training for the administrators on how to use Skyward to enter their information when they do that. Now, this budget cycle, you can elaborate how they're submitting it to you. Again, it's going to be a lot of the same information, but that's where the questions are going to come, because now you're plugging in data, like, what is this number, what it consists of, and I'm sure Skyward breaks it down.
So actually plug it in, because we were talking about zero up versus...
That's more about...
This plus three percent?
Yeah, I was thinking like next year, the zero base, because they're going to be entering it straight in. They're going to have to enter in the line items.
This year won't be zero.
This year, we're going to have to compare to what we have, what I've done in vital, because I've updated the budget, revised budget, did all the transfers, made sure that the account structure is the way that it should be. What they're comparing to is going to be a lot more legitimate than what they have in the past. So it's still, even though we're not going to be totally there, we're going to be very, very close. A lot better than we were last year, because you have to start with a bad budget, you're going to always budget from a bad budget. It never ends.
That's a good point. What you're getting at, though, is it's not just training on how to use this as a tool, but also as a district, how, what's our approach, how we want them to enter the data, what we want them to capture later.
Right, I want them to build from the rundown. So whenever they're six, 10 number, they're going to be actually entering the line items, what makes up that budget.
I mean, we were told last year that some of this training was taking place, so I don't know. I mean, that was Mr. Harris, that some of that training took place, I don't know. But also, you know, going forward, we will have a new superintendent, so that superintendent will also, you know, see what he or she, what their, you know, philosophy is as far as, you know...
I wanted to make sure that you understood we're not going to get zero up this year. So this budget coming, it's not going to be the ultimate goal. It's going to be better, but it's not going to be zero up, where every line is put in, and then you can build from there. That makes it a lot easier from our perspective when you take a look at it, like, you know.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure I understand why not to do that. I mean, they don't know how to use the tool, but they've been training the budget process, they can divide the numbers, and someone can enter, put it in the tool for you.
That's what I'm going to be doing. Like, each of the numbers, I'm going to be meeting with the administrators this year. When they submit their budget to me, I'm going to question the line items as I'm putting it in. I know that a lot of them already supply the data, that I can start putting the information and then question it, whereas I didn't have the time last year, and I'm going to have more time this year to devote it out, because we did hire the business manager.
Yeah, we want to get a jump on this, on the cycle this year, because with the new board being seated last year, the committees were formed in December, we really only started in January. So now, now really, we'd like to start that process starting next month, in November especially.
I could see things, it looks good, if I'm looking forward. My plan, I'm actually not fine on anything. Things are progressing a lot faster, and I thought they would, like, the board could shake, and that would have happened.
Yeah, I think they would start pulling from bottom up this year, and it's a refinement process, as everyone knows the tool. It's just not taking last year's budget as it started.
And they wouldn't, because I'm not giving that to them.
And...
Yeah, then one more thing. Ms. Haynes said we're capturing $457,000 worth of access money, which will be moved to the general fund. For those of you who are not sure what access money is, this is scheduled, a special education expenses that we've already paid over the years, and submitted for reimbursement. So that money is, as I understand it, sits in a, it sits in a fund in the state at 0%, so we're pulling it into the district to at least get some interest on it, so. So anyway, that's $450,000 to start the year that we weren't planning on having.
Any other questions?
That's it. That concludes my report. Does that access money then sit in there when you turn around, use that for specialized in the next few years?
Well, so it's, yeah, so we've already spent that money ourselves. We're getting it back, so it goes in the general fund. We could use it for whatever we want to use it for.
And there's already money in the general fund, I mean, in the budget force by the organization that let me know of, you know, in that case.
And the reason why it was kind of off-budget for a while, and I won't go all through all the machinations, but there was a change in the vendor who used it, there was a backup for a while, then we got more than we should have gotten, and then we had to, we had to hold off for a little bit, and I'm misspeaking it all, let me know, but I think that's kind of the gist of it. So that money, we knew the money was there, but we weren't sure when we were going to be able to get that, so it'd be kind of off, off the budget per se, right? Is that, any incorrect information there? No, okay. So that's why it was brought on, brought back on budget now, so there still is some more out there that potentially we could get, let's make it $150?
Yeah, if it's sitting at 652 or something like that up there, and we're taking 457.
So, you know, if we get the proper special education billing out there, we could potentially get some more, so. So money can be used, right?
I have a swamp work, so I can make sure if we can get it back.
Any other questions, Mr. Wolf? Public comment? Mr. Scott, policy?
There's five policies up to first reading. Encourage all board members to take one. If you have any concerns, let me know. We'll bring them up at the meeting.
Policy of credit card usage, if anything, for hotel nights?
I think a little of that. Next meeting's at 24.
We could certainly join a, join a loyalty program, and...
Give them Patel points.
Yeah, it could, that could be a night. Would do. Any board questions, Mr. Scott, and any of the so-listed policies?
That was a terrific report.
Public comment? Mr. Miller, technology?
Yes, we met on September the 4th, and the main topic that we covered was online rollout, at the beginning of the school year. It went well, no major surprises, and there were a couple glitches with performance, I think, in an area here and there, and there were some issues with initially downloading some of the applications, so it's minor issues, but overall, no major surprises, and I think one as well as could be expected. Actually, the rollout of the iPads, students went quicker than planned, so I think that was a lesson learned for next year, that none of them allocated much time, that they were passing out of distribution.
Has Mr. Matt reported any broken yet?
No, not any broken so far, that I'm aware of.
Not as of court. Not as of the court.
Oh, yes. As I said, app loading was an issue, but it seems to be fine, seems to be working itself out. I think overall, network capacity is fine, and looking tonight, the teachers using the iPads, it seems to be working well. Didn't seem to have any capacity problems. Another one of the benefits of this is we no longer have any personal devices connected to our network. Now that students have iPads, there's no reason to connect personal devices.
That's definitely no reason, and actually none being connected, that's a...
They're not.
Ah, okay. They haven't found a workaround yet?
I'm not on the way.
Anything else, Mr. Miller?
Well, the online payment was the one issue that it's been a challenge. It wasn't in place as of before. We have insurance, it's been suspended since the first...
I believe Mrs. Haynes said it's still tied up and legal, is that?
It is tied up and legal, it's the last that we heard. If it was at the end of this week, I think Scott was planning on an alternative, maybe not using the tool, but it's been over there, we could get through legal.
They told us tonight at the high school that they were receiving checks.
Yeah, so got to the point where we could not get through legal to you.
All righty.
That's for the insurance?
Financial system, as I said, I scouted before we went online on the 10th of December, is the target date for go-live, is to be in place by January 1st. Data warehouse is, the basic staff is trained and up and running, using the data thing, that is the only thing that moves the mains. And he introduced a digital document storage as something we're going to start investigating, looking at it in October. That's something that we have on the calendar to take a look at in the future. And the big item that's coming up is looking to replace the student information system. Starting to look at evaluations, but the current system is old, the support is not good. BCIU is actually looking at another vendor, I believe it's supporting Infinite Campus. Also, Skyward has a tool that obviously we're integrating with the rest of our packages, so.
I've already got a price quote for you.
Perhaps a discount, you got a discount there?
I've already got a price quote for you.
That'd be discounted.
Good question.
A little slow up there.
Are they going to use the iPads for testing and function in math exam, and use that to go around them?
Absolutely. As far as I understand, they can.
Yeah.
I've heard already, as far as chemistry, using it for labs, they've used it already too far.
And is that going to raise our, you know, grade reporting, to the school unit and all this side?
I don't believe so.
No, they have to do, they have to do individual like...
It really would be a school with these, you know, up loaded, be next to their thing. Yes, the teacher has flexibility to choose the option, but they can do certain things in school with not also. They can Google, they do Google sets, and they can agree, and they're responsible.
So staying in your, that's not your realm, you're... Any other question? Any questions, Mr. Miller?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any public comment? Mrs. Albrecht, I don't believe we've actually had a transportation...
Well, there's been some issues getting everyone together. We are meeting Monday, September 17.
So October 15th is not correct.
Publicly do a cartwheel, and Mr. V. Scott shows up to the meeting.
I could never do Wednesdays, ever.
Well, for the next three months, I'm going to be Monday.
All right, I'll be there.
I'll bring my first aid kit.
I'll look forward to seeing you. However, the good news about not meeting till now is we're going to be able to discuss all the things that went correctly and differently than I expected.
Well, I do believe a thank you should go out to everybody who pitched in in the absence of Mr. Delfer, so... Yeah, I mean, honestly, I haven't heard too many issues, so...
I haven't gotten too many emails.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, thank you.
I got one last year.
Who stepped in for that, really, Rob?
Joel, did a good job. So, yeah.
I need to be removed from the transportation, because I can never make mistakes, so either remove me, so you don't hurt...
You have to find, you have to find your replacement.
I bet you can get someone to switch all these to policy.
Can you send Dexter?
He doesn't want to go, he's got to deal with me.
There's a line to get off that committee.
It has nothing to do with me. I don't have, my Monday nights are tied up, and then they added a Wednesday house night on the other night of the week, but I have class on Tuesday and Thursday nights, I have no night.
I'll see meetings on Mondays.
You can't do Mondays.
Which means I'll miss it, because I'm already at facilities, and then I got to go to other meetings on other Mondays.
Your facility meetings, your facility meetings are on the night of the cow, ours are the night of the...
I'm just saying, I'm killing the corn, so.
Yeah, transportation is more of an add-on.
Just remove me, that don't hurt the corn.
Any other questions from Mrs. Albrecht, besides complaints?
Sure. Saturday noon.
Any public comment? Old business, we have the voting meeting, and I believe Mr. Sillber has something for that.
I was just wondering where we were with BEC and the repair estimate from Thompson, just kind of sitting. I haven't heard anything on the last meeting that we had, where we had presentation. I was under the impression, I'd give him my information, I don't know where it are. Has anybody got to receive anything?
Good question.
A portion of one, a portion of the building, we were hoping to get repaired before winter came, so there would be less expansion.
Well, I think the last time we were kind of hemming and hawing about maybe putting the bid out for spring.
He was going to get the information. There was just one area in question, basically, that we left it over.
Well, we were hoping to grab a ladder and carry it up there.
Well, the bid's supposed to go out in December, so it was...
He wished it was first.
Anybody in the administration have any input there?
We'll reach out to them and find out what's going on.
I'm not sure of the protocol, that's why I'm asking.
This is the protocol, this is here.
It just happened.
Got it. Any other old business? Any public comment? Any new business from board members? Seeing none, any presentations by public on any items whatsoever? All right, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Mr. Dershowitz and Mr. Jay Scott.